Good evening, everybody. This is the June 13th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas is absent. Councilor Keefe?
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Councilor Novosowski? Here, Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Junino?
Here.
Here, Quorm is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 6th, 2016.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege. We're going to ask for a moment of silence for several reasons. The first is for two Revere residents that had passed away within the past week. Carmen Sharafa, known to us as Happy, and Felix DeSisto, retired Revere firefighter and former member of the Board of Health. The second reason why we're going to have this moment is for all of the victims affected in Orlando this past week. You know, our nation has seen many tragedies over the past few years, but this one, it hit close to home. It's on our coast, and so many people were affected directly in this area, to people that they know or were related to in this horrible, horrible, horrible tragedy. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
So at this time, since the maker of the motion number for item number one is not present, we're going to suspend rules to take up item number two.
Calendar item number two, joint meeting of Verizon, National Grid, and Comcast to discuss double poles.
Madam President, members of the Council, I think at this juncture, at least Verizon and others have reached the lowest level that we've been at in terms of numbers, sheer numbers, in some time. So we continue to make very good progress. I think everybody should have a copy of the double pole list that was sent, and we'll take whatever questions you might have.
Do any councilors have questions? Councilor Guanasso.
I applaud the efforts of the three of you, in which the results is proof and is putting here for us, and certainly the residents of Revere are very grateful. I have a couple here. It seems that Rumney Road has eight poles still, double poles still in place there. In essence, sort of need of service. And the other is, we have one on Hutchinson Street that's been there since November of 2014. And that's referring to the job, the transfer, meaning I'm sure that we're transferring some instruments from one pole to the other. So it's pole number, on Hutchinson Street, it's pole number 52.5. On Coolidge Street, 17-1, that's been in that condition since January 15, 2015, so that's really is quite old. And I noticed happily on pole number 999 on Revere Street, that's been taken care of. I don't know why it's still on the list for a transfer, because that's been resolved. Bruzy Street also has a, what they refer to as a pull pole, number 3191/5089. That would pretty much help me out in Ward 3, and to help some of the residents to get those unsightly poles removed. Stan, this is a personal welcome back.
Oh, thank you. Actually, Councilor, I never left.
(laughing) I'm still working, I know. Good job. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. This is directed to National Grid. I think this is something I brought up several months ago. It's still unabated. I'm getting calls from people, and they have a valid concern. They wonder why we can't just take care of a light bulb or something like that on a This is in the central parking lot, which is Council McKenna's ward, but I have a person down there that called me on it. It's directly across from pole 4707. There is no number on this particular pole. It's an old New England Tell-And-Tell pole. The light's been out now for a year. And I've brought it up numerous times, and if they want me to meet them down there someday and show them where the pole is, I'd be more than happy to. But it's insane that we can't get a light bulb put in a pole.
All right, we'll have it taken care of. Maybe it's the no number that's confusing them.
That's the one that has no number. But if you, in the central parking lot, you pull in, it's the first pole on your right.
First pole, okay.
And the other issue is Woodland Road down in Oak Island. I brought this up also, at least a year ago. There's a pole at the corner of Oak Island Road and Woodland Road, on Woodland Road is the first pole if you turn off Oak Island Road. Again, very poor illumination, if any. Apparently, there's a bird's nest in the globe, okay? And this is just a matter of someone going down there, whatever they use, a lift, taking the globe off, taking the stuff out, cleaning it, and making sure it's working. It's embarrassing when people keep calling me over something like that, and I don't know if they think I'm lying to them or something like that, because they can't imagine that a large corporation like National Grid couldn't take care of two items as small as that. So I hope that next month, when you're up here, that this will be done. And again, this is no reflection on you personally, but somebody in your crew isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. This is for Stan. Stan, I know we shared some emails and phone calls on a pole on 1619 Washington Ave. It's a pole that stands by itself, all the other poles in the street are on the other side of the street. I had Dan check at National Grid, and I also got a picture here. You can see that there's no electricity on the pole, and the only two wires go into one house, 619 Washington Ave. Comcast, I believe it's Comcast, I'll give you the pictures. Comcast and yourself, Verizon. The pole, the pole is rotten, ready to fall down, and I don't see why we can't just get remove the pole. You don't have to replace it, and just run the wires across the street like every other house in the neighborhood. Madam President, could you, I'll even give you a copy of the email. Could you give that to, please? You can have those pictures.
Okay. I'll send someone down to take a look at it, and if we're still using it, then we'll continue to use it. But if it's of no use, then we'll take it out of service.
Well, what's the sense, I mean, what's the sense of putting a pole in for just one wire? It's not going to any other house, your service, it's just going to that one house.
I know. We're still using that pole for the service, so I'll have the engineering office take a look at it.
Wait a minute, you confuse me here now.
Let me be unambiguous.
Okay.
If we're using the pole to service a home?
Right.
And it's needed, I have to have engineering take a look at it to determine if they can service some other way.
Okay.
If they have to continue to use that pole, they may replace the pole based upon the condition that you've just expressed.
Right. But I just can't, hopefully engineer will see the same thing, or common sense that I see, that, I mean, if the houses on both sides of a go from the other side of the street, from the poles the other side of the street, why not just get the pole out of it? She wants the pole out of there, why not just get the pole out of there? But I'll leave it in your hands, good hands. Thank you.
Not a problem.
I have one other question for Dan. Dan, I don't know if you're aware of it, but I haven't had any recent, within the last few days, conversation with the, about the St. Mary's, the fields down St. Mary's. There seems to be some kind of problem going on, getting the power turned on down there. National, are you aware of that?
No.
Would that be your department?
Wouldn't be mine, but I could take a look at it. But no, that wouldn't go through me.
No, I know they've been trying for weeks to get the power turned on, and for some reason, they just, National Grid, National Grid ain't responding.
Is this the ball field?
Yeah, the new, three new fields they're building in back of St. Mary's.
Okay.
The complex.
All right, so it's a brand-new service?
It's a brand-new, yeah, it's all brand-new wiring, and the lights, brand-new lights put up.
All right, I'll, I mean, if it's all inspected by the city, and no reason why it should be held up?
I appreciate you looking, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna?
Hello. I have two poles, 176 in Winthrop Ave, pole number 76 in Winthrop Ave. It's a double pole, and there's about two feet of concrete around it, holding it, holding the base up. And I think we've talked about this before. Nothing's been done. And the other one's 97, 97, the pole's number's 97. And then there's just one more, it doesn't have a number on it. And I've called a couple of times to National Grid, but I don't think they can find the pole. It's across the street from the Julia Wad Howe Assistant Living Facility, and it's on Cummings, Douglas Cummings Park, and it's right on the corner. There's a bus stop there, and no one can find the light because it doesn't have a number on it, the pole number.
What street is it?
It's on Crescent Ave, and I think it's like 130, maybe? But it's across the street from Julia Wad Howe Assistant Living Facility, and it's on Douglas Cummings Park. It's right on the corner, and there is a bus stop there, and it's been out for probably about two years now. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for getting to a lot of the lists in the last, in the recent months. We still have, I don't have the pole number, but on Fernwood Ave, next to Walgreens, there's a double pole, or it's a cut-down pole, a double pole, that's been one that we're still, I couldn't find it on the list, but it's still.
Yeah, that's a conduit, and I believe that that might be yours.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a Comcast.
All right, if we could, you know, that would be one that we'd like to get to, it's unsightly, but outside of that, thank you very much.
Councilor Novosowski?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Yusevich.
Yes.
I take the tall guy first. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
I heard you were climbing poles during the strike.
Yes, I was, yeah, yeah. All over Revere.
Yeah, sure.
No, I was, actually, I was.
Glad to hear that.
I was parked out in front of Councilor Powers's house, doing a job.
I can believe that. Stan, at 1604 North Shore Road, it used to be a double pole?
Yeah.
And they didn't?
There's nothing on it, right? On that North Shore Road, that's a blank pole?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, okay.
You beat me to the punch. They changed, they took out the double pole, everybody changed over, but they didn't fill in the base. There's a pit there.
Okay. Could you shoot me an email with that address, so I can put it into Contract Services?
Yeah, I even have a picture for you, so.
All right, great.
They did leave a couple cones there, so it's.
Okay, so it just needs to be filled and patched?
Filled in and patched, yeah. That's number one for you. Number two is on Charles Ave, we have a pole, a double pole that's ready to be taken Pole 1737, everything's off, and I was down with Dan, and I drove around today and noticed that, so that's ready to come out.
Yeah, we're way behind in terms of some of the cities and towns right now, and we're well ahead here in terms of where we are. It might take me a little while to get to some of these singular ones, but.
Just, you know, I hear from the constituents, I'm passing it on to you, sir.
All right, very good.
And I noticed that pole number 48 is not on here, on the Revere Beach Parkway. It used to be, and it's still there. The pole's still there. And we're talking about eight years now. Is there any light at the end of the tunnel on this one?
I don't know.
Is it yours?
I don't believe so, because we've listed all the ones that, we've taken all the ones that were clear to us, with the exception of, I think we have 10. I'll see if that's one of them, but it doesn't appear as though it is.
Yeah, well, you know, because I know there may be a little battle going on, but, you know, eight years, I think, is.
Yep.
A little steep to wait.
No, I agree.
And VFW Parkway, pole number 743, shows Verizon's next on the list to move out. Sort of want to bring that to your attention and work on that, so.
We may be able to address a few of these, but it's not like we're going to be having a full crew in at a scheduled time like we did earlier this year to clear out large amounts of poles, but, you know, if we have occasional crews that are coming through that can take care of this stuff, we will.
Well, I would think after eight years, there should be a priority on getting rid of a double pole. Thank you. Tim, you're next. I love you.
How you doing?
Thank you, thank you for working on that this afternoon.
111 Centennial?
111 Centennial.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wire was right across the road, I couldn't leave it there, so.
Yep. Thank you.
Also, I noticed on the list is Damon Street, D-A-M-O-N Street, pole number 644, and then right below it, you have DeHone Street, pole 644. So I believe that Damon Street should be taken off that, off that list. And, Tim, that's on your ballpark. And also in the Hand Ave, pole 3921, Comcast, that's yours. And that's it for you. And Dan, you're next for me. One thing I didn't show you this afternoon was that trench at 231 Walnut Avenue, that has sunk in about six inches.
231, again?
Walnut Ave.
Walnut Ave.
That was put in for that new medical facility at the top of the hill about four, five years ago, and it.
In tough shape?
It sank pretty well.
Okay.
And I do want to thank you for driving around with me this afternoon.
Okay.
It was quite a session. You thought you'd never make it here on time, right?
No, we did.
But, you know, there are some issues on here, and I know you're working on them, and I thank everybody for working on double poles. And I know, I think it was seven years ago, Councilor? Thank you. Playing whose pole is this? And I know seven, seven years ago, when we started this program of having you guys up once, once a month, is working very well. I thank everybody for their cooperation. And that pole 48 was even before, so just to rub it in a little.
Was it new?
Yeah, sure. So anyway, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna, and then Councilor Patch for final comments.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one more question. I know you're replacing the poles on Hall Street. That's true, right, Hall Street? Replacing the poles, putting new poles up there? You don't know?
It could be, I'm not familiar with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think when, the last time Dan you were here, I said that the bases weren't filled, so they had deep holes in them, around the poles. And so I was just concerned about the residents, the kids that play around on that sidewalk.
Okay, we're showing a couple of poles on the list, okay.
Those whole, those new poles, they haven't been filled in with tar. Can we, can we do that?
There's still double poles, though, correct?
Yes, well, there's some double poles, yes. But.
Once the double poles, the old poles are removed, then they'll go in and, you know, repair the base around it.
Okay, the, the double poles, the new poles that are in, have nothing to do with the next pole that's next to them. It's just the base around the new pole that's not, it's not filled in. And I'm just, it's on the sidewalk, I'm really worried about the kids that play there. So it has nothing to do with that double pole that's connected to it, it's the new poles that don't have the holes in them.
All right, I'll send someone down to take a look at it, but typically, if there's, you know, a suspended pole or one on blocks, we wait until we take that pole out, that before we go in and clear it, but I'll ask someone to take a look at it.
Yeah, this has been since February, so, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President, let me speak again. Dan, I did that, we had the conversation earlier, I did get a text that that, on Wentworth That pole, it looks like it's 401, but it's 40, it's 40 with a missing number one. It's on Wentworth Road, it's the last pole.
Did you say it didn't get fixed?
Well, you did, I believe you did, I originally text you in January, and I believe it was fixed, but I don't think the light bulb was the problem, that is, it's definitely out.
Okay.
It was working, flashing, you know, some nights it would work, some it wouldn't, and then now it's completely dead. So I think there's another problem beside the.
It's a work request that was created last week, that's why I was wondering if it was fixed, so we.
Oh, no, it's been out for the last few weeks.
Still out, all right, yep.
Yeah, okay, and I just, well, I got Comcast, Tim?
Yes.
I just, I just want to, if, if you could, that pole I talked to Stan about on Washington Ave, 619 Washington Ave?
Yep.
Pole number 4235-J, if you could remove the Comcast wire off that pole, then hopefully if Stan, engineer decides that it won't hold up the job if they, once they straighten out there, whether they're going to remove it or not.
We'll coordinate with Verizon and whoever else we need to.
Thank you.
Make sure we get off there in due time.
Thank you.
I will tell you, Councilor, that just looking at the picture, the reason that that pole apparently is there is, you have a very, it's a, looks like a ranch-style house, correct? That it attaches to? And if that, if the attachments for Verizon and Comcast were not on that pole, the slope across the street would bring the wires down to an unsafe level. So I think that it's one of geometry, rather than one of, all the other poles are on one side. Reason that pole appears to be there is that if you were to take that pole out of play, attaching from the pole across the street to that home would have the wires crossing that street at an unsafe level.
Well, I'd be more worried, concerned about National Grid wires, if they can make the swing across the street, I don't see why Verizon and Comcast can't.
No, no, it's not, it's not, it's the level, the house is lower than any of the others that is surrounding it. So that pole was more than likely put in so that the wires crossing the street would not be a danger to any traffic that was traveling on that street, whether it be truck or vehicle. I'll show you after this.
All right, but again, again, I'd be more concerned about National Grid wires, if they can do it, of course, there's much more danger involved with National Grid. If they can do it, I don't see why Comcast or Verizon can't do it, but I'll leave it up, I'll leave it up to your engineers. And I also got, Stan, I also got pictures of the pole in front of St. Mary's that we've had some emails, conversation about. I'll show you pictures of that and after, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Are there any other councilors that have questions while we're here today? Council Zambudo?
I really don't have any questions, I just want to thank these gentlemen, we've made a tremendous amount of progress, and I'm really proud of the partnership we've forged ahead here. We've made, we've come so far since a few years ago, when my hair was falling out and I was screaming every day, and I have, I have no issues to come bring up to you, except to compliment you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, and I second that, and also want to give a special thank you to National Grid for taking care of Washington Ave. It looks so much better, and thank you for taking the whole portion and just redoing it, rather than patching it again, so thank you all, and have a great night, we'll see you soon. This time, we'll return to the regular order of business. Calendar item number one? Calendar item number one, a certificate of commendation will be awarded to former Revere Police Department Officer and Federal Marshal Dennis Michella for his outstanding work in raising funds, organizing, and spreading awareness of Boston's Wounded Veterans Run. So at this time, I'm going to read a short bio about Marshal Michella. I asked our chief for some comments and received a list of his accomplishments. So from 1975 to 1983, he served in the Revere Police Department Patrol, Motorcycle Patrol, Narcotics Detective Unit, and Special Police Unit. In 1983 to 1987, he was United States Marshal Service Criminal Investigator, assigned to the Fugitive Investigative Strike Team, a member of the Special Operations Group, a Special Agent assigned to the Drug Enforcement Administration out of Boston. From 1987 to 1992, he served in the Police Department Patrol, Motorcycle Patrol, and the Detective Bureau. He was a member of the United States Army from 1967 to 1970, a Vietnam Vet in 1969, who served in the 18th Engineers Brigade with the rank of an E5. He is the Matolo Post Commander in the City of Revere. He is the co-founder and president of Veterans Assisting Veterans. He's a board member and one of the founding members of the Boston Wounded Vet Run, and he is a Community Resource Officer for the City of Revere. So what a list. Congratulations on all of your accomplishments, and we're going to invite Councilor Rotundo up at this time to give you your presentation. And thank you, chief, for attending tonight.
Thank you, Ashley. Clearly, the accomplishments of Dennis Michella far go beyond what was spoken or what would be said. What he has done for the veterans here in Revere, as well as in Massachusetts and New England, is something that is unparalleled in this community. Dennis has always been a great asset to veterans, as well as to police officers, including Chief Caffarelli. This is a little bit of an honor for me to bestow this upon you, as little as it is. I also want to thank you for raising the funds for the wounded veterans to help those that have traumatic brain injury, as well as those that have vascular lumps. Without a further ado, I'd like to read this and give you the honor and recognition that you so do. The City of Revere certificate of commendation, recognition of your outstanding work in raising funds, organizing, and spreading awareness. raising funds, organizing and spreading awareness for Boston Wounded Veterans Run. An organization that improves the lives of wounded veterans once they return home from protecting our country and freedom. Special recognition is hereby accorded to you, Dennis Michella. In witness whereof, the certificate of commendation is greatly bestowed by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 13th day of June in the year of our Lord 2016 and of the Independence of the United States of America 230th year." Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say some words?
On behalf of Andrew Biggio and the rest of the Wounded Vet Run, we want to thank the mayor, city council, the police chief, the girls that work in the mayor's office, and the residents of the City of Revere to help us come through the city. We raised over $200,000 and we helped six severely injured veterans, so I want to thank everybody in the city. I know we caused a little bit of traffic, chief will attest to that, but it was for a worthy cause, so thank you very much.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by councillor Zambudo that the mayor request the Veterans Department in conjunction with the DPW to install a memorial poll for Felix De Sisto, WWII US Army Air Force Veteran and former Director of Public Health for the City of Revere at an appropriate location to be determined by the city and family.
Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, I'll save my comments for the presentation, however, this is a decorated war hero and I couldn't think of a more appropriate person for a memorial. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Novosowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, you know, I knew Felix very well, worked with him when he was in the Board of Health. The only issue I have with this motion is that the council didn't follow the protocol that this council put together five years ago, when everything is supposed to come up from the Director of Veteran Services for these, so he can confirm the veteran's status and before it even comes up to us, it would have a location. So I would ask that this be referred to the Director of Veteran Services to confirm everything and work to get the location of the memorial, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President, I think, I, I agree with councillor Novosowski, I think what can be done is we can send this to Nikki Buer and in the same process, move the ball forward here, and Nick can obviously provide that information accordingly. I don't see any reason for it. I will say that there have been some people that have been, have presented themselves as veterans and that are not, so I think Nick Buer would be the perfect person to, to ensure that. We wouldn't want anybody talking about veteran status that they have when they really don't. Isn't that right, Ira?
Councillor Zambudo.
With all due respect to my colleague, you know, anybody that doesn't think this gentleman, this decorated war hero isn't a veteran, I thought I was going by procedure, that the motion sort of directs it to the, through the policy. I, I find this might be nitpicking, but whatever the process is, let's go through the proper process.
Councillor Novosowski.
Thank you. Proper process is for it to come up through and from the Director of Veteran Services through the mayor's office to us. You voted for it councillor, all these years ago, and that's the proper procedure. I would hope that you would remember that and put it through those motions, and that's the proper procedure. As far as councillor Rotundo was concerned, I'm not looking for his opinion. I think it, this is the way it should go.
With all due respect, Madam President, I thought only the maker of the motion gets to speak twice here, that if we're going to follow procedure here, let's follow procedure.
I am responding to questions and thoughts, sir.
I wasn't looking for a response.
I wasn't answering you councillor, I was answering councillor Rotundo. And I moved that this be referred to the Director of Veteran Services for the proper procedure.
Point to parliamentary procedure.
Feature point councillor.
I believe what's on the table is a roll call vote for the, for the motion. Shall we move forward with the motion, please?
Correct. On the motion, Madam Clerk? On the original motion.
Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas is absent, councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novosowski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Gino?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes. Calendar item number four, motion presented by councillor Guanasso that the mayor request Greg Hayward of Vivint Solar to appear before the city council at the meeting of June 27th to discuss Vivint Solar's sales process relative to the installation of home solar energy systems.
Councillor Guanasso.
Madam President, over the past couple of weeks, I've been reviewing some of the installations that were conducted within the City of Revere, namely in Ward 3, and there were a couple of questions that arise in reference to some of the work and some of the paperwork that was put in place. And I have questions that I know the homeowner would like to address this with, they, with the individual. They tried on several occasions to reach this individual, who, what I, my understanding, he lives in the City of Revere, is if he's a real good neighbor, he comes up before this city council and he, and explains to us what's taking place, because there are a lot of civic-minded individuals that are out there, that they're very energy people, that they want to conserve energy and they want to put solar energy to use, but at what expense and what cost, and sometimes the little details are left out and the homeowner is left holding the bag some years later. I want to review this in full with this gentleman and have any questions that the homeowners have that, and I understand he's made quite a few sales within the community, so I think it's a great opportunity to have individuals have a, a concern, to appear on the June 27th to discuss this with this gentleman, so that we can answer some of the questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you councillor, are there any other councillors that have questions on this motion? All right, councillor Rotundo.
Madam President, then I'm not sure if this is the case, but if councillor Guanasso could expand upon it, if he's heard that this company is actually putting liens on properties, is, is, is that something that we know about?
Councillor Guanasso?
One of the accusations, I'm not sure, in fact, I was reviewing one of the concerns with the city clerk this evening, and the homeowner was quite concerned about a $40,000 lien on their property. The clerk and I have researched that particular property, we couldn't come up with it. I spoke to the homeowner, homeowner minutes ago, and she still believes that there is some sort of lien on the property. So to alleviate some of these concerns, we're going to hear from the gentleman himself and, and give an opportunity. And also, there's another issue in reference to the signage of a contract that, in my opinion, and I, and I saw it myself, it doesn't appear to be the same signature of, of the homeowner, so there are concerns, and I want to make certain that before this gets out of control within our community, and we have several homeowners taking over the calls with this, let's get it all held out, and if there is a mistake being made, then let's correct it.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Rotundo.
I'm just wondering if we should impart a moratorium until we have all the facts there, because what happens if we have solar companies that are actually in the, in fact, deceptive business practices and saying one thing, and unfortunately, people aren't really reading their contracts when they're responsible for it, but at the end of the day, it sends a message to them. And God forbid that there are other people that have had this actually happen, maybe advertise it in the paper, have a moratorium regarding this very issue, and speak with the city solicitor, they're come up with an idea on how to deal with it in a broader issue, is if they are actually putting liens on properties and we have many people in our community affect it, then we might want to send this to the Attorney General's office.
Thank you councillor, councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I know there's many solar companies, and I've heard a lot of rumors that the upfront costs are paid by the solar companies, so I'm suspicious that they may in fact put a lien for the, for the cost of the installation of the equipment until a certain point in time. I'm not saying that's good, I don't like it, but I've heard rumors to that effect, so I think this is a great motion, and I think that we should find out what the heck's going on here, because a lot of people are tempted, they hear these commercials that they're going to save 40% of their electric bill, and it may in fact be true, or it may not, but let's, let's try to protect our residents.
Thank you councillor, councillor Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I would also agree with, and I think that it's a good idea to possibly bring the company up here. I would not be in favor of presenting a moratorium, because there are many solar companies out there, and there's, there's always going to be some goods and bads with purchases. It would almost be in the, the same breath of putting a moratorium on, on any consumer purchases out there, because like anything, some deals are too good to be true. So, but you know, we have to allow people, there's plenty of residents in the city that do want to choose to use solar and go that route, and I wouldn't want to stop that process just yet. But I think that it's important for our consumer at the fears department and possibly may, you know, getting some assistance from the Attorney General to, to take a look into these companies and the sales tactics. Certainly, a first step would be bringing them up to the city council, but I think stopping the progress of, of being more energy efficient as a city would not be a, a good move just yet. And I have heard the same, same statements where the upfront costs are put onto the, the property owner to, to, you know, may, maybe they're putting some sort of a lien, I think if we had record of it in the city, we would know if there's a lien, but there are upfront costs that the solar companies are incurring, and their, their buyback rate is at 10 or 20 years to, in order to alleviate that. So I have heard about holdups on refinancing or holdups on sale, sale of the property until the, the upfront costs are alleviated.
Thank you councillor, councillor Guanasso, any final comments?
One final word, this is in no way putting a reflection on this company that they're doing something wrong, I, I want to make that perfectly clear. But I did review with the city clerk, and what it, this is going to be a open discussion, informative discussion based on the fact that we, and the city clerk showed me this evening exactly, they could go to SuffolkDees.com and come up with this information on their own personal usage and their own personal homes. So, and she showed me exactly the property that we were talking about, and we went by instrument by instrument right down the line, and it was, it was very, very clear to do. So with this type of information, it might help these homeowners who have this kind of policy in place to feel a little safeguard, that they know that they don't have a lien, because a couple of weeks back, there was some mention on national TV on one of the major stations about liens being placed upon property owners. I'm not saying this is the case with everybody, but what I am saying is I'd like to have a discussion with these individuals, to, to tell us firsthand what's going on with their business and how, because this individual is selling to quite a few homes in Revere, and, and Revere is going to be impacted by it. So before it gets out of control, I'd like to get it right into control and to understand what's going on.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you, Madam President.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number five, motion presented by councillor Rotundo that the mayor request our state delegation to obtain or look into the feasibility of the authentication of the piping plover population on Revere Beach. Further, that the state require in its authentication, the Audubon Society to provide concise visual and population count of piping plovers to include beach migratory patterns. Further encroachment of the Audubon Society unchecked or validate assertion creates a hardship for the Jack Satterhouse residents and potentially decreases the value of properties on Revere Beach Boulevard due to the lack of beach access.
Councillor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. We all know that this is in the venue of the federal government, we all understand this. Many residents down at Satterhouse recently had spoke to me about this issue and hence I, I forwarded it. But at the end of the day, if you take a look at what's going on there, it, it's literally well over a third of the beach at this point, or at least that's what it looks like. I know that they had a meeting, I know that people had spoken about it, so at the very least, I'd just like to forward this, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, some of us have lived with this piping plover population for a long time. Yeah, say that quickly. The first time I saw a piping or even heard of a piping plover was with the Belle Isle Mosh group many, many, many years ago, as I've been around a little while. We had a meeting recently with all the players, FEMA, MEMA, BEMA, whatever, everybody that's in control. The, the good news is, is that they have made some sort of a deal with the federal government, and it is relieving a little bit of the pressure, and they're going to have less of our beach, I'm told. So fingers crossed that this is actually going to come through, but they have made some progress where they at least allowed them to clean around these, these contraptions so that it's, it's a little better for the residents, but hopefully it's going to get much better soon, so I got my fingers crossed. Thanks.
Thank you councillor, councillor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, there was a meeting at the Jack Satterhouse, councillor Zambudo and myself, and I believe councillor Haas and Novosowski attended that meeting. There is a concern down there, there has been a concern for several years now, and there were representatives from DCR there, actually the commissioner was there, and they do have a plan which they say will cut down on the space required or allocated to the piping plovers, and that will give the, the residents down there a little comfort, because now they can utilize the beach more fully than they have been in the past. And also, as councillor Zambudo alluded to, they have a plan in place where they'll be doing more extensive cleaning of the areas in and around the, where the piping plovers are nesting, so, and I expect that will take place sometime within the next several months. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you councillor, councillor Guanasso.
I had the occasion to be walking Revere Beach last Saturday, and I heard chirping, and I actually saw a plover. And, and so, and I heard chirping, so I said, this is quite interesting, and I, I looked over and saw this little, little, I might say it's quite attractive, a little bird, but to take up and displace a great percentage of our beach for birds is so unfair, you know? And I, and I also happened to notice how the Audubon Society membership stares and watches over the DCR workers as they're cleaning and trolling to clean the debris away. It's a form of harassment. I mean, if I was driving that tractor, to be honest with you, on some mornings, I might be tempted to just wipe them all out, because this person was just standing there, defying this poor guy to go even near it. It was so unfair and unjust that a worker has to be subjected to that kind of scrutiny. You certainly see the markers up there, they know enough now about the, the concern of the Audubon Society and to protect nature, but really, you know, at what odds, what, what, you know? And then now they're talking that there's possibly seven on that whole beach, you know? So the endangered species might be coming to an end because I saw one. And so, I'm just taken back by the concern of the Audubon Society, of which I might add, I bet there's not a one single member of that society who frequents Revere Beach to enjoy the beautiful beach that we have. And we finally got DCR on a path that they're doing a tremendous job for our city and our visitors that come to our beachfront. They're finally doing it great, and now you're putting a hardship on them by placing these membership staring at them as they do their work, and watching over with their little booklets and they're just staring down. I just find it harassment, and I find it unfortunate, I give all the credit in the world to those DCR workers who have to work under those conditions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you councillor, are there any other councillors that wish to speak on this matter? Thank you, I think this is a great motion on behalf of the councillor, and I know it's something that our state delegation is definitely looking at, I know it's something that Representative Vincent is concerned about.
I know it's something that Representative Vincent is concerned about and has definitely worked at in the past, but as you know, we're confined in how much we can actually do. And you have to state your name and address for the record.
Donna Nugent, 120 Conan Street in Revere. First of all, I want to applaud anybody that is supporting the piping plover program. The piping plover program is an established curriculum in the public schools, not just Audubon. And I actually have that curriculum with me. Never let it go. Kept it in a trunk because it is an amazing opportunity for the city of Revere to take it, reinvent it, especially with all the young teachers, and use it as a part of the city. We have so many amazing things here from the ocean and I and I just wonder, where are all the amazing curriculums that I've come across in my teaching career, a year of marine mammal studies, and I'm not seeing it? Please take advantage of your wetlands, of your piping plover programs, and of anything that is in your area. It is an unbelievable resource. Thank you.
Thank you. On Counselor Guanasso's motion or Rotundo's motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number six, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor provide a response to City Council Order 16-099, which was passed by the City Council on April 25th, that the mayor provide job titles, lines of authority and salaries of all aides in the mayor's office. Further, that the city solicitor offer an opinion to the city council as to where in the city charter do mayoral aides derive their authority, if any. The city solicitor shall also provide the current statutory lines of authority in the city of Revere, for example, mayor, then council president, then vice president, et cetera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I believe the first two were actually finally entered in the budget here in which we have the salaries of what I have asked for. But as far as the line of authorities, that's pretty much based upon people within the community, various department members, people in the DPW that have come to me with questions and I'd just like to have an answer. That's all.
Any other counselors? Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. As Counselor Rotundo alluded to, we have received the salary schedule and the job titles. And I can understand why the motion was April 25th or 26th. This is only six weeks later and to me, that's I think that's a timely response. I've always been under the impression that the line of authority for those people working in the mayor's office was the mayor himself, who he would designate to deliver messages to certain department heads and to carry out his his wishes. I I don't ever recall this coming up before the City Council this year until Mayor Regal was elected mayor. And and I really, that troubles me somewhat. I think that the people that are working in the mayor's office, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm in there on a daily basis trying to get things done, they've been very responsive and I see the office functioning very well as far as I'm concerned. And no one in that office has ever tried to usurp authority upon myself as the city counselor. They've asked me certain questions with regard to the what the mayor was looking for, what I wanted to get done. And I think that I know there's a there's a motion on our communication up here, there was a motion made regarding a waiver for certain employees in the mayor's office. I know I could name off a half a dozen people that have been working in the city of Revere for past several years that have been granted waivers, okay? I think that particular those particular jobs for the two individuals in question that work in the mayor's office, they're very sensitive. There's much confidentiality that's required in that office and I think the mayor should have at his disposal people who he chooses. And I understand also with regard to the residency waiver, the mayor has made it very plain to his employees that he wants them living in the city of Revere. And I understand from conversations I've had with the mayor that that's an avenue that he is pursuing. Thank you, Madam President.
Point of order, Madam President.
Excuse your point, Counselor.
Just to let you know that my fellow colleague here, and I hope I'm given the same opportunity, had spoken for well over seven minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors Ambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, the elephant in the room is that we finally have the budget in front of us tonight. Now, I think everybody's realized that over the past few months, I've been very hesitant to criticize the administration because to be perfectly honest, everybody knows I was on the other side. However, I'm trying to work cooperatively with the administration because we need to get along and move the city forward and that's what I've been doing. But I'd be I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about the fact that this is June 13th and if the former mayor had delivered a budget on June 13th, he would have been hung on a cross. I just need to say that because we he was criticized for the budget being late every single time and I didn't hear a peep. So I had to at least bring that up. Now, I I like the way the budget's laid out. I I like everything about it except for the fact that I would have liked to have seen it a little sooner.
Madam President, if I may.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, thank you. And through you to the counselor, I just want to put kind of on the record that technically this is within 170 days of of my swearing in, so which would have been June 22nd. And part of the reason why there was a little bit of a delay and I there wasn't much of a delay, maybe a week, but we wanted the format, I wanted the format. As somebody who has done budgets before and understands the readability of of being on that side, it was something that I wanted to make sure was done right rather than something that was thrown together that didn't have page numbers. And we've we've seen that before, a budget that didn't have page numbers and a budget that may not have had some of the backup information that you'll see in your packet. But I want to I I can't emphasize enough that I appreciate the cooperation that you have shown and I appreciate that you said that you agree with everything or you like everything in the budget so far. I might hold you to that.
I said, I like the way it's laid out.
You said you liked everything in the budget.
I only glanced at it, so I don't I don't don't take that as a statement that I like everything in it, but I like the way it is laid out and it is readable and I and I appreciate that. And and you know, my my commitment to work together stands and I I intend to cooperate.
I appreciate that. It seems understood.
And when we disagree, we'll do it privately and and that's always been my style anyway. But I had to bring up and give you a little jab because I know that the former mayor would have got his brains kicked in.
Understood.
Just to point, gentlemen, I've been very lenient. We're speaking on Counselor Rotundo's motion. We haven't quite got to the budget yet, so I know Counselor Rotundo has a final comment on his motion and then we'll talk about the budget under later.
Thank you for the latitude, Madam President. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mayor, final comments?
Madam President, to the counselor's motion, I'll say that my understanding is the same as Counsel Powers is that I have the discretion to assign folks as I see fit and as we need to provide services. So that that's my understanding in terms of the discretion that the mayor's office has and the discretion that my staff has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. I'm not going to get into a debate over this or what was privately said to employees in the city at the DPW or for that matter, anything else. This is the first time that we have had a mayoral aide that has made a significant amount of money and quite frankly, I believe justifiably in his case. That said, more importantly, Brian, give me a second, I gotta I gotta admit, this is a refreshing budget. You know, I'm sorry, Tom, but this is probably the best budget that I've ever seen in the sense of its ability to read. It, you know, thank you.
You're welcome. And Madam President, through you to the counselor, I just want to make it clear that the individual that I hired is the chief administrative officer. He's the chief administrative officer of the city that was a position held by somebody else in the city and he's been given that that title and has the the ability at my discretion to be the to be the chief administrative officer.
Again, I'm not questioning the way that you're going to run your administration or who you put in place. I'm not going to debate the issue. You know my my issues. I don't have to spill them out here for you all to hear again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On Counselor Rotundo's motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Late communication from the mayor requesting a waiver of the residency rule in accordance with Section 2.06.060B of the Revere Revised Ordinances for Mr. Omar Bukili, the chief administrative officer.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, through you to the counsel, this request is pretty straightforward, but I I request that, you know, you've had we have a you, the city council has a appointments committee. I would appreciate if that if it were sent to that committee and discussed further, but it is pretty straightforward. I have an individual who is working for the city who has been looking for a house, actually looking for a house before my election, I'll I'll note, and hasn't found one and there is an end date to the it is a temporary residency waiver. There is an end date to it and I look forward to further conversation in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for the council's edification, I did touch base with Counselor Guanasso, the chair of the appointments committee, prior to the meeting and this will be going to the appointments committee. Are there any counselors that have any questions on this? And Counselor Guanasso has mentioned that this meeting will be held before the council meeting on the 27th. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to state for the record, I I am on the appointments committee and I look forward to discussing it. I don't think it'd be much of a discussion. I do appreciate Mayor Regal bringing this forth and asking for a waiver and, you know, I would be in favor of that waiver, but I would also want to say, the reason being is the person he's asking for the waiver for, Mr. Bukili, is the ideal resident that we would like to have in our city. He's a great, he is doing a great job as an employer of our city and he is the resident, the type of resident we are trying to capture in our burgeoning community. In the developments that we want to have and the developments that we do have, he is the ideal resident that we want in our city. So I would be in favor of having him get into the city and if we have to give him a little more time to do that, I'd be in favor of that.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All right, this will be going to Counselor Guanasso's appointments up committee meeting, which will be held on June 27th.
Late communication from the mayor relative to the FY 2017 budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, thank you. Honorable members of the council, this is my first budget, so so be nice, but I want to say that I'm pleased to submit for your consideration the proposed fiscal year 2017 operating budget for the city of Revere. And I want to start off by saying that I'm grateful for all of the work that my department heads did. We had some some extra hours of budget work that was done and I appreciate their time and their effort. And I especially appreciate the work of city auditor Laurie Giadella and director of finance, George Anzoni, and their teams in getting the budget completed. To give folks a little bit of context or a little bit of highlights of the of the budget, the total budget is $173 million. That is prior to state assessments, which equates to around 2.13% increase, which for those of you who have been around budgets understands that this is probably one of the smallest increases in several years. More importantly, I want to note that we're not relying at this time on any stabilization or rainy day money. That is something that I had talked about an awful lot on on your side of the dais and I it's something that I I think is very important. That is to say that if we get a significant cut in local aid or if there are any things that happen, we'll be coming back. So I want everyone to understand that this is a blueprint, you know? This isn't a a final document, but it's a blueprint for the direction that we want to go in as a city and the the direction that I want to take the the city and the administration will will take. And to give a little bit of context in terms of the percent increase, which I said was a little over 2%, our noneducation discretionary costs were held at half a percent. So we we did a really thorough job of looking at every budget, looking at every department and making sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck and every penny that's spent. And just to give folks a little bit more context in terms of increases that have happened previously, you know, over the recent years, we've been trending at about 4% to 5% increase each year in our budget. Just last year, we were at 4.8% and our the discretionary noneducation increases were about 4%, which equaled about $3 million. So we're we're working very hard to make sure that we find efficiencies, prioritize the use of funds so that our spending can be kept in check while we're providing the best services to to our residents. To give you a couple of highlights in terms of what is included in the budget, we have I did include money for a human resources department. That's something that I've talked to to the council before about and we've we've talked a lot about it. I know Counselors Ambudo, you and I both had motions before the council to to include this in the city budget. We did, we were able to to fund that and that will go a long way in terms of professionalizing city government and making sure that we're hiring the best and most qualified people. You know, it was mentioned about some individuals that I've hired. I do think that my my staff is the best staff that any mayor in the metro region has, probably in the Commonwealth. So to be able to bring a high level quality candidates to to the city is going to be important to be able to provide the kind of services that our we all know our residents deserve. Another investment that the city made is in the Office of Innovation and Data Management. This essentially is a 3-1-1 system. And for those of you who who may not know, 3-1-1 is kind of a one called a city hall customer service system. And so bringing the city into the 21st century is a goal of mine, a big kind of overarching goal, but I think 3-1-1 will be a piece that is going to bring our constituent services and our services to our residents to a new level. And I will add that in terms of the 3-1-1 system, we recently were notified by the Commonwealth that we received $54,000 to help get this up and running. So there is some state investment that's being made along with our own investment. And finally, one thing that I want to mention is the water and sewer department. Counsel Patch and I talked a little bit about this, but we I know that there is some frustration about the water and sewer department in terms of the amount of money that we're spending in the water and sewer consent decree. It's over, you know, it's tens of millions of dollars that we've we've been spending and we're going to continue to spend in the in the near future. So my goal in in pulling the water and sewer department out of DPW and creating the kind of focused management that I think the department needs and really being able to make sure that the money that we do spend, that we are spending, the bond money that you all appropriate and approve, which we're very appreciative of, that that money is spent in very well and that there are people watching all of our contractors to make sure that we're on the right track. So in terms of prioritizing city services and making sure that our DPW and our water and sewer department are really operating at the highest level possible. I look forward to working with you over the next couple of weeks to hash out the details of of the budget and look forward to your consideration if anyone has any questions. I know you did get it kind of, I won't say last minute, but you've gotten it just earlier tonight, so you may not have a lot of questions, but we'll be going through it in in detail. And one thing I do want to note is that there's one schedule that we're going to be adding that I'm going to be including hopefully by, you know, I can send it to the clerk tomorrow maybe or Wednesday, but it's a revenue. maybe, or Wednesday, but it's a revenue, a kind of a P and L, profit and loss statement. So you see the revenue, you see the expenses, and you see where we net out. But I think that's an important piece, obviously, revenue is an important piece of any budget, so we want to make sure you all get that, but I wanted to make sure we got the, at least the expense side to everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will be opening this up to councillors, but before I do that, I just want to let everyone know this is going to the Ways and Means Subcommittee, and we do have the schedule for that. So there will be three meetings that will be going over the budget. The first is Wednesday, June 15th, in this council chamber at 5:00 PM. The second is Monday, June 20th, in this council chamber at 5:00 PM. And the third is Wednesday, June 22nd, in this council chamber at 5:00 PM. So three meetings, the schedule was emailed out and will be posted on the city's website. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. Obviously, I'm thrilled with the 3-1-1 system, and I need, it'd be shame on me if I don't give a plug to the Baker-Polito administration for the community compact that creates this grant. So, you know, we signed the community compact, we're one of the first cities to do that, and almost, almost everybody's jumping on board nowadays. So I'm thrilled that that system, it is bringing us into the 21st century, and I'm very pleased with all this stuff, but I couldn't let it go unsaid that the Baker-Polito administration created these community compacts, which is really helping all cities and towns. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make it clear that as far as, we did have, I did have a discussion with the mayor over the, but it was mainly, it wasn't concerning the water department, it was concerning CDM Smith and how much money they have been making over the past years that we haven't really have a figure of the millions of dollars that we keep giving them, and the cost that they actually are getting out of those millions of dollars. As far as the, I would rather see some of that money go to the water and storage department that recently has been cut from their overtime, and I just don't think that they can fulfill their job without, when they called out to do overtime, that they should, should not be cut their overtime. And I think the real problem is CDM Smith, not the water and storage department. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, just quickly through you, and I know we'll get into this conversation a little bit more, but my perspective is that the water and sewer department is, or should be responsible for the oversight of the work that's being done. And that's what we want to, we want to make that investment in the water and sewer department, to make sure that they have the focused management, that CDM isn't given the keys to the castle, and they're not allowed to do whatever they want, and that I can do so much as mayor to make sure that they're kept in check. There needs to be some strong management down at water and sewer. And what you'll find is, in the proposal before you, we break out water and sewer from the DPW, and we put in a superintendent of water and sewer. So that superintendent will be tasked with and will be successful at managing CDM as a contractor of the city, and then managing the process, and making sure that CDM, you know, making sure that any money that's being spent by the city is being spent wisely, and that if there are, if there are other avenues or other options, that they're fully vetted and they're kind of well thought out. And so the idea behind this is that water and sewer and, you know, to some extent, CDM have to be, have to be on the same page or working together, and I think that bringing some focused management to the water and sewer department is an important step, and making sure that the money that we're spending and the investment that we're making is actually getting us to a point where we're getting towards compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to advise the citizens, the residents of this city who pay the tax bills, that you've already announced the dates for the Ways and Means Committee, and that's a good thing, but anyone who's, you know, I get questions every day from people who say, "Well, why does it cost this, or why does it cost that to do certain things in city government?" And I think anybody that has those questions should be watching the Ways and Means Committee meetings on the dates that you specified. Actually, next Monday, there'll be no regular council meeting, but that's when there'll be the second Ways and Means Committee meeting. And I think that goes to a long way to transparency, and people should be able to know exactly where every dime is spent. People have concerns over that. The tax bills are rising, and that's through no fault of any, this mayor or any other mayor. It has to do with the cost of living increases throughout the year and the decades. So again, anyone who wants to know where their tax dollars go, and watch those Ways and Means Committee meetings, because I know a lot of the councils will have questions, and the mayor, I understand, will be here to answer those questions. His department heads will be here with him, and we now have a great deal of transparency in this city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. So this communication will be going to Ways and Means again, which will be held on the 15th, 20th, and 22nd at 5:00 PM.
Late motion presented by councillor Nowosowski that the mayor requests the DPW to install approximately 40 feet of chain link fence at the southern end of Florence Ave, near 120 and 115 Florence Ave at the dead end, approximately six feet behind the guardrail from the property line. People are throwing debris over the hill, causing damage to the properties below on Overlook Ave.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this is one of two locations. The second one I haven't put in yet, but Florence Ave is open behind there. Not only are the people dumping tires back there and going through people's fences down at the bottom, but some of the rocks are rolling down the hill from the top, and the kids are throwing things over the hill. And it's just a bad situation, and I think these people ought to have some relief. We've left enough room for snow to be packed over on the other side of the guardrail, and I hope this gives the people down below some relief. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Late motion presented by councillor Morbido that the city council present Chief Gene Doherty with a certificate of commendation congratulating him on the occasion of his retirement and thanking him for his leadership and 40 years of service on the Revere Fire Department.
Councillor Morbido.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make an amendment to that motion and add all the city councillors, because Chief Doherty has worked hand in hand with not only the city council over the years, but the mayor as well. As many of you know, he's worked for the fire department for 40 years, and under his great leadership, he has accomplished so much. And we'll save most of the comments for the presentation when we present the citation of recognition to him. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I will just point out that part of the reason why this went as a late motion was because we wanted to make sure we could give him this presentation this month, because if we waited till the next meeting, we'd have to postpone it until the end of July, which isn't really fair, if you're just retiring to come back in July. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think it's obviously a great motion. You know, people who know me know I've been here a long time, and Gene Doherty and I have had our ups and downs, and we've had disagreements on certain things, and we've agreed on a lot of stuff. But he is the most respected chief in the state. He's, he is an emergency management guru. People come to him for his expertise, and, you know, I commend him for his 40 years of dedicated service to the city of Revere and 15 years as chief, and I respect him, I highly respect him, and I'm thrilled that you're giving him a certificate. He certainly deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Just a point of information.
Page two, councillor.
The certificate will be on behalf of all of us. I'm going to add all of our names.
Thank you, councillor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Late motion presented by councillor Powers that the mayor direct the DPW to address the following sign locations. One, sign on Rice Avenue at the Pines Yacht Club is not clearly visible, it needs to be strained. Two, the street sign and one-way sign on Bickford Ave are both missing. Three, street sweeping sign on Noponset Street is laying on the ground, it needs to be reinstalled. And four, the street sign on Shawmet Street at the corner of Dun Road is in very poor condition. It's faded, it needs to be replaced.
Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. The motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. The city council will be adjourned until June 27th at 6:00 PM.